Okay, welcome back. We're going to nine four two. Good afternoon.
The auditing services agreement extension. They approved audit term for our audit metrics group LLP expired following the completion of the 2021 audited financial statements. Administration is taking an extension to the audit term for the five-year period 2022 to 2026. Administration completed an RFP in 2019 for auditing services and metrics group LLP was awarded the services for a three-year period ending in 2021. Attacked as appendix A is the award letter. Our recommendation is that council extends the term. When they had provided us the RFP, they did give us pricing for a five-year period, but at the time, council only chose to retain their services for three years as opposed to going back to the market with a RFP. We're asking that the term be extended.
Extend, okay. Counselor Swiger.
Thanks, Mr. Reeve. My opinion or comment is that we probably should be changing our auditors every maybe three to five years. With metrics group, we've had them for a long time. They actually changed their name not that many years ago, probably about four or five years ago, so it's the same. And I'm not sure if you want to... I don't think it's good policy to keep the same auditors forever because then they maybe start overseeing stuff. I'm not saying they're not doing a great job, and I think they are, just like other opinions, and I maybe ask the CIO for his opinion on maybe we should even have a policy on how long do you keep the same auditors?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, or through council, or to council through the Reeve. There is some, I think, validity to Counselor Swiger's suggestion that, like in many things, I would suggest that you change engineering, you change your legal, you change your auditors on a somewhat frequent basis. Particularly in the audit world, there may be some sense to bringing in a fresh set of eyes, somebody who hasn't seen our books before, doesn't know our processes, and comes to it with fresh eyes. We've been with this particular organization for a number of years, and I would leave it to council. It's really, the auditors are really, they really work for council through the audit process. They report directly to council. There is even an opportunity for council to speak directly in camera without staff to the auditors. So it really comes down to what is council's comfort level with our current auditors and would you like to keep using them, or do you believe it's time for a change? I believe even previous councils, Counselor Krivjak and Counselor Reeve Kalinsky before, I believe it was the same auditors even back then.
Yeah, when we first started, it was them.
So I think there is a, I think there is a...
Different name.
I think there is a valid argument to changing auditors. Obviously, the reason to stay with them is we have a set rate, we know what that rate is going to be, going out to market probably have some financial impact. It'll probably cost us more than what we're currently, what we've currently signed on for, but I'd leave it to council to determine whether having a fresh set of eyes would outweigh what additional cost a different auditing firm might have.
Yeah.
So, Mr. CIO, is it, maybe this is kind of too short notice to sort of cancel these guys, but could we like keep them for another year, six months, or how long will it take to do an RFP? I guess I'm just looking for a recommendation because I truly believe that if you got a new set of eyes, and I don't know how many years they've been doing this, but a long, long time, so a new set of eyes sure helps, and if we can accomplish that right away, then I'd say we should.
I would, I would kind of defer to the general manager. I'm not sure what the termination clause is. It would strike me that we're probably best off for one more year, given that we're already... But I don't know the details of the contract, so I'll leave that to the general manager to speak to.
So our contract with them currently hands on the completion of the 2021 audit, which they've since presented and has been approved by council. I do however want to let council know that we had a very difficult time in 2019, even when we put out the RFP. We not only put out the RFP, but we contacted individually the big, what we call the big four firms, so your KPMG's, KPMG Deloitte, they still didn't put a RFP in. And locally, a lot of the other municipalities as well, metrics is one of the bigger ones in the municipal world right now. We could put out an RFP. I think it's a little late now for the 2022 financial statements because it's May, the preliminary work is usually done in September. A new firm would need to acquaint themselves with our general ledger system, but we can certainly put out a RFP if that's what council desires, and then we'll bring back the results, and then we'd still have to pick from there. But of the three proponents that we received last time, they were the ones that were selected.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Swiger.
So could I make the motion to extend them for one year with the recommendation that we do an RFP for following years? Would that help, Mr. CIO?
To, through the chair, to Counselor Swiger's question, yes. I actually think if you wanted to change, that's probably the best at this point is one more year, and so we know going ahead that we'll be prepared for an RFP fairly quickly and to go to market. I think that would be the best route if you want, if you wanted to change.
I just, my personal, these guys have been so professional as long as I can remember that it's in their best interest to go to us with a fine-tuned comb, so I don't know. I just, they were so professional all the years that I was here before, and they seemed very professional when they came here. And I'm sure you did other audits and other, you know, other boards and stuff, and it's always, it seemed to be the same guy on the screen all the time, right? They do them all around here, so, good or bad, but they, I think they do a very fantastic job, you know? And I used, I remember the comments from Gordy years ago that how good they were, but, you know, time has, a lot of water went down the Beaver River since then, right? So if you want to make a motion, it's your choice.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Reeve, to extend their contract for an additional year with the recommendation that we take out an RFP for 2023, as it would be.
I would add, Mr. Reeve, and to council, that we are quite comfortable with metrics group, which is why the administrative recommendation was to stay with them, so it's really, auditors really work for council to audit what financially the administration is up to and what the shape the MD is in, so it really comes down to your comfort level with our current auditors and what you would like to see out of auditors in the future.
Yeah. Counselor Crick, thank you.
Yeah, just a question about what would be the kind of cost that we'd be looking at if we're switching? You say we're probably going to have to pay more if we switch someone else, and I don't know what the cost would be.
Through the reef to Counselor Crick, it would be whatever the prices come in at on the RFP. It's upwards of $60,000 either way, anyway, and also depending on the new accounting standards that are coming out, they would charge to get us in par with that, like we have one that we're working on now that the auditors discussed with you, as a retirement obligation, so we expect the prices of auditing generally to increase. And with the cost of, you know, the CPI, the Consumer Price Index, with everything going up, just like everything else that we're paying for, we expect the prices to be way higher than we pay right now.
So if we approve this for five years, and not the motion that Mr. Counselor Swiger just made, but if we approve the recommendation to go for five years, we would be still at that $60,000 for each of those five years?
Well, they did provide us with a quote that's similar to what they gave us in 2019, because they've been with us since when they were all Hawkins-Hep Dumonts to when they changed their names, but if they can do it for that price as well, they would just let us know, I guess. But if we go to the market, it'll be whatever the prices come back at.
Mr. Reeve?
Yes.
I'll just kind of rebuttal that. It's whatever the market is, I mean, it could be less. It's, you know, that's what they're charging us now, it could be more, it could be less. It doesn't necessarily mean by changing it's going to cost you more. But then again, I'll just say, I think it's good if somebody else with new eyes looks in, they, you know, it takes them a bit longer to understand our municipality and how we function, and, but they may, they may have some recommendations that the other guys have just, you know, haven't really picked up on or whatever, and like I said, I'll say, I think they're doing a great job. I just think it's not, not great business to use the same forever, and I'll say, whatever, we've been doing it for, I don't know, 20 years?
Okay. We have a motion by Counselor Swiger on behalf of council that council approves extending the term of the MD of Bonneville Auditing Services provisions agreement with metrics group LLP for a one-year period for the year of 2022, and furthermore, that council directs administration to issue a request or proposal for auditing services for the year 2023 to 26.
Mr. Reeve, I have one correction.
2027?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any discussion on this? Sorry, Deputy Reeve Fadav?
Yeah, so in the next RFP, we'll be asking them to submit a tender as well, right?
Yes, a request for proposal.
Okay, sounds good. So they won't be excluded, right?
Through the reef, to council, so this is the, this is the always interesting part of an RFP. So it's entirely likely that metrics group LLP would bid, they would not be excluded from bidding, and it's also entirely likely that going to a new contract, we could end up paying more than if we extended the contract for five years. So we could end up with exactly the same auditor at an increased cost, so just so you're aware that that is a, that is a definite possibility by going out, going out to market, particularly if we're choosing based on the lowest qualified bidder. So assuming that metrics LLP was the lowest qualified bidder, we could end up going to market and ending up with exactly the same auditing firm.
Yes, go ahead. That was, that was just pretty much summed up my concern there, that we're going to put this out to tender, end up with the same auditor at a higher cost for the next five years, so.
I'm just going to ask, like, staff, we work good with metrics. We've always worked good, like, I've never, like, from before, they always used to praise, they used to praise it. Am I wrong here?
You're not wrong, Reeve Kalinsky. We've had great working relationships with metrics. We have no concerns with them. They're always very forward-thinking, and they work very well with us. We have no concerns from the administrative side with them.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other discussion? Okay, I'm going to call this to the vote then. Okay, looking for another motion? Yes, Counselor Crick?
I'll move the original recommendation that we go with a five-year extension for the metrics group.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Crick, for making a motion on behalf of council that council approves extending the term of the MD of Bonneville Audit Services provision agreement with metrics group LLP for a five-year term for the years. Is that going to be from 2022 to 27, or no, it'd be 26 then? Okay.
2022 to 2026, because we've gone back one year now.
Okay, that's okay. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call it to the vote. Thank you. Nine four three.
The Bonneville Regional Fire Authority 2022 fire apparatus purchase funding options. Council approved the request by the BRFA to issue a tender for the replacement of five fire apparatus and further directed administration to provide funding options for the purchase request as presented at the April 13th, 2022 regular meeting of council. BRFA had requested to purchase 2000, to replace the 2007 pumper, three 2007 pumper, two 2007 pumper units and three tankers. The total cost of all units being $2.9 million. The 2022 capital budget includes a $1.1 million towards capital purchases in 2022, so the shortfall is $1.769 million. So administration's recommendation is that council approves an unbudgeted expenditure in the amount of $1.7 million for the purchase of four additional fire apparatuses to be funded from the equipment replacement reserve.
Okay, thank you. Looking for a motion or comments? Counselor Krivjak?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. I'll make the motion to approve the recommended action.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Krivjak, for making a motion on behalf of council that council approves an unbudgeted expenditure of the amount of that much for the purchase of four additional fire apparatuses to be funded from the equipment replacement reserve, 1.7. Any discussion on this? Yes, Deputy Reeve Fadav?
Yeah, we're replacing some of these prematurely, we're replacing these not because of breakdown reasons, but for insurance rates, and meanwhile, parts of the MD do not qualify for subsidized insurance rates because they're beyond a range of a fire station. So I think it would just, you know, it'd be nice for everybody to try to take advantage of these rates, but we can't. There's no, you know, say, there's no fire station near Cherry Grove, so the people out there are paying prime rates while everybody else gets subsidized for their insurance rates.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call this to the vote.
Mr. Reeve?
Yes?
Just a comment for Counselor Fadav. I mean, I agree with you, like, they're paying a ton because you don't have service out there, but maybe make a motion that we start putting money aside for Fire Hole in Cherry Grove.
Well, it seems like, you know, we, we've been talking around this, and I have addressed those concerns, and it seemed like it's never in the budget, but yet we have $1.7 million in the budget, but not 1.2, so I'm just kind of, I'm sure there's going to be the support, but they definitely need a hall and, and, you know, we definitely have to work.
Okay, but I'll just repeat it, like, I had to do that eight years ago to get Ardmore and Fort Kent. The motion was made and we approved it, so I mean, if you, maybe you want to bring it up at a council committee or whatever, make the motion.
But there was a fire station there, right? And, and again, you know, I mean, that's why budgets are for, to, and I guess it wasn't on last year's budget, there was no, there was no interest in it, and this is not about making a motion here, it's about coming up at next year's budget and actually putting aside for that, and that's, that's budget talks. It's kind of unwise for me to make that motion right here. It has to come up during budget talks.
Thank you, that was carried. Nine four four.
Bylaw number 1799, the Agroplex renovation loan bylaw. On March 9, 2022, council discussed the request made from the, from the C2 for the MD to assist with the cost for phase two of the C2 renovation project and made the following resolution, that council directs administration to arrange financing options with the C2 for the Agroplex renovation project to a maximum amount of $300,000. Council gave first reading to bylaw number 1799 to loan funds to the C2 for the Agroplex renovation project at the April 13th, 2022 council meeting. The MGA also requires that the loan bylaw be advertised. Bylaw number 1799 has been advertised in the local newspaper and on the MD website for three consecutive weeks. Administration is recommending that bylaw number 1799 being a bylaw of the MD of Bonneville to loan funds to the C2 for the Agroplex renovation project be given second reading, and also that bylaw number 1799 be given third reading.
Okay, thank you. Just looking for a motion, Joe.
Mr. Reeve, I'll, I'll just have a, well, I'll make the motion.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Swiger, for making the motion on behalf of council that bylaw 1799 being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville number 87 to loan funds to Bonneville and District Leisure Facility Corporation for the Agroplex renovation be given second reading. Any discussion? Yes?
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, my question was, how much money do, does the MD still have in the C2 budget?
In the 2022 budget or in the reserve?
Well, we've got, I'm not sure where it is, but we do have money that we put aside for the C2 when they pay us back, whatever, is, is there anything left in that amount or no?
The fund that this one is coming out of is with just over $300,000, so it'll be just about emptied, but it'll be replenished as well, right? So it'll be paid back.
Well, that was kind of my question, if it's, like, I mean, I'm not against this bylaw at all, I just wasn't sure if we still had money left in our reserve for them that we could have just given them, but I guess we gave that up for the phase one, did we?
So through the reef to Counselor Swiger, we have about $150,000 left in the reserve because there was another phase of the project that we had contributed $125,000 to, so we drained down that reserve. But they had, they needed to approve another phase, the second phase of the project, and reached out to us to loan it, and that they would repay through the funds that are generated through some other activities that they were doing. It's a very short-term loan, I believe it's for five years with two payments per annum. We've had various discussions with the C2 themselves, they have a copy of this bylaw as well, and they are quite comfortable with it.
So that was my, that was a point of my question, I just was wondering if we still had money, we could have just given them their money rather than making them take out a loan, but we could, but it would be half of that amount, is that what you're saying?
Through the reef to Counselor Swiger, they are now taking out a loan, they're loaning it from us.
Part of me?
This loan is from us to them.
I know, but we're loaning them their money. I'm just saying, could we have just loaned them $150,000 because we've got $150,000 in that account already? Am I missing something here?
Through the reef to council, this was a request of C2 to borrow the $300,000.
Potentially, you could have given half, but the other half would have come from town. I think it was just easier to say they pay the full amount back, right, and you can do with that, whatever you want after.
Any other discussion on this motion? Okay, I'm going to call this to the vote. Carrie, looking for a third?
I'll make a motion for third reading.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Subjuk, for making the motion on behalf of council that bylaw number 1799 be given third reading. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call it to the vote. Pretty quick on that, Jolene. Carrie, thank you. Nine four five.
Policy number 2B.025, the reimbursement and expense claims policy amendment. Council reviewed the proposed amendments to policy 2B.025 reimbursement and expense claims policy to address gratuities paid at restaurants and for taxis at the April 2022 committee of the whole meeting. The current policy sets the gratuity reimbursement for grat, the reimbursement for gratuities at a maximum of 12%. This amount is less than the average requested by most restaurants. Moreover, most restaurants have a set minimum gratuity when the number of guests at the table exceeds six. The committee of the whole approved the proposed changes to policy number 2B.025 reimbursement and expense claims policy, and are recommending that council adopt the amending policy as presented.
Okay, thank you. Looking for a motion? Or comments? Yes, Counselor?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Swiger, for making a motion on behalf of council that council adopts policy number 2B.025 reimbursement and expense claims policy as amended. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call this to the vote. Onto nine four six? Or did we just do that one? Yeah, nine four six.
Quarterly financial reports for the period ended March 31st, 2022. Attacked for council's review is the financial reports for the quarter ending March 31st, 2022. As of March 31st, 2022, the total revenues were $3 million and total expenditures were $13 million. These expenditures represent 12% of total budgeted operating expenditures. Capital expenditures at the end of the quarter totaled about $711,000, with several projects still in progress. The cash balance is $51.4 million and investments totaled $50 million. This quarterly report also includes the 2022 budget summary that has been updated for unbudgeted expenditures approved by council up to April 27, 2022. The total operating and capital budgets have increased by $1.5 million, and the revised total and operating capital budget is now $162. I do need to add that as of today, the total budget is $166 million, following the previous approval of council.
Thank you. Looking for a motion?
I'll make the motion with the correction there of 166 instead of 162. Is that right?
Okay, yes, go ahead.
Through the reef to Counselor Krivjak, could you please repeat your question?
I'll make the motion to approve this quarterly financial report, but you wanted an amendment with the, no? Okay.
No amendment required.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Krivjak, for making a motion on behalf of council that council approves the March 31st, 2022 quarterly financial report as presented. Any discussion on this motion? Yes, Counselor Swiger?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. So it was appendix A, it was the appendix A, and it was, I had two points I'd like to make on appendix A. Roads, streets, walks, lighting, and airport.
Can you please speak? I can barely hear you.
Oh, appendix A. I guess, I guess my first point is the roads, streets, walks, lighting, and airport. I was kind of maybe hoping we should maybe break out the airport, just so that we've taken it over, we can kind of manage better what, it gives, it gives me a better impression of what airport is, you know, costing us, that sort of thing, if you broke it out. And then I did want to ask you about the $7,961,000 in, says it's salaries, wages, and benefits for airport and, am I meeting, am I reading that wrong?
No, you're not.
Okay.
Through the reef to Counselor Swiger, the total budgeted wages in the infrastructure department is $7.9 million. So the budget's on the right, and our actual today is on the left, which is the 1.6 million. So this appendix has been laid out in the same fashion as our financial statements, just for, so that throughout the year, council can follow the same pattern as opposed to using a different method now and a different method at year-end. So we've used the same allocation. We can provide specific reports for the airport if required, but that total of $7.961 million is the total budgeted wages, salaries, benefits for that department.
Okay, just wasn't clear, because this says roads, streets, walks, lighting, and airport, so I wasn't, I didn't realize you'd broken out all the D and U staff into that.
Yes, it is.
Okay, well, thank you.
All right, any other discussion? Seeing that all, oh, sorry, call to the vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, Talu. Nine point five, nine point five one. Mr. Vespoli, I think? Yeah?
Good afternoon, Mr. Reeve, members of council.
Good afternoon.
My first RFD here is for the 2021-2022 winter snow plowing of driveways update. As part of As part of the, or as part of the services offered to the MD residents, Infrastructure Services has two programs for plowing snow from residential driveways throughout the winter months. The service is through MD policy four eight point zero zero five, snow plowing of driveways policy, which is attached as appendix A. Program one is the snowplow flags whereby residents purchase a flag for up to fifteen minutes of plowing. The current price for this flag is, uh, it's, it says forty dollars here, it's forty-five including GST. Uh, it's my, my mistake for, uh, not adding exactly what we charge for the flags. It's forty-five including GST. Program two is the hardship flags whereby residents that qualify for the program under, under policy four eight point zero zero five receive the plowing service up to fifteen minutes free of charge. The number of residents signed up for the hardship program are in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, hundred and fifty-eight and the subsequent winters were a hundred and six, a hundred and twenty-six, a hundred and thirty-two and a hundred and thirty-two again in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. Both programs are for plowing of residential driveways only. Snow plowing services are performed for certain community organizations free of charge as per the policy. This, this summary of snow plowing services reflects the period from mid-November twenty twenty-one to the end of March twenty twenty-two. Snowplow flags, five hundred and ninety-seven, hardship flags, six hundred and forty-four. Community organizations, they were tracked separately as road concerns and not part of the, uh, of, of the flag count. The majority of flags are handled with a light plow truck, but the grader is also used as well for, for the service. The approximate costs associated with the programs are as follows. A light pluck, a light plow truck averages fifty-five, eighty-nine an hour plus labor, approximately eighty dollars an hour. A grader, twen, two hundred dollars and thirty cents per hour, uh, plus labor, approximately two hundred and thirty-five dollars per hour. The average time it takes to perform this service is forty minutes per driveway. This includes travel time to the location, performing the fifteen minutes of work and returning and going to, or going to the next location. This equates to with a light plow truck, about fifty-three dollars and sixty cents per driveway and a grader, a hundred and fifty-seven, forty-five per driveway. Based on the light plow truck rate of fifty-three dollars and sixty cents for seventy percent of the grade, uh, of the, for seventy percent and the grader rate per driveway of a hundred and fifty-seven, forty-five for thirty percent for all flag requests this winter, which was twelve hundred and forty-one. The programs had approximately, the programs had an approximate budget impact of one hundred and five thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars and eighty cents with an approximate revenue of twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars. Uh, so cost and source of funding, the program is funded through Infrastructure Services operational budget of, of the respective years and its administration's recommended action is that council accepts the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two winter snow plowing of driveways update as information.
Thank you. Uh, Deputy Reeve Fadiev.
Uh, are we going to be looking at level of service, uh, come, uh, you know, come time of new budget?
Uh, through the reef to, uh, Deputy Reeve Fadiev and all of council, yes, we're going to be looking at the, uh, at the program for the upcoming year. I just wanted to give council an update. I don't know if you've ever had the, uh, had an update of what the program costs. Uh, I just wanted to bring an update to council of what it would, what the programs cost us.
Yeah, well, thank you for that update. It's, gives us a pretty clear picture of what's going on, yeah. Counselor Swigert.
Yeah, just, uh, I was maybe hoping that you'd recommend, uh, you gave us the information, which is great. I'm sure, I'm sure you have recommendations though. We've had these discussions for years.
Uh, through the reef to, to Counselor Swigert, uh, we do have recommendations, but at this time, this was just for a, uh, an update to give council some, uh, some food for thought. And then at an upcoming committee meeting, we will probably be coming back with a, uh, a recommendation with the policy.
Thank you.
I think he thinks it might start snowing in a few days here.
You never know, right?
Counselor Crick.
Yeah, I'm just, just looking at the, uh, the costs, like the light plow truck at almost fifty-six an hour plus labor makes it up to eighty an hour. And I'm guessing that those costs are actually, if we factor in like payroll expenses to that, it's probably higher than like the eighty and higher than the two thirty-five an hour.
Through the reef to Counselor Crick, uh, for the most part, you are correct. Uh, what we do is we take, uh, the road builders rates for the unit, add the winter hardware on it, take eighty percent of that, that come, that's where the, uh, the equipment rate comes from for all rate, for all pieces of equipment. And I just based it on the labor rate that we have, uh, without the, uh, added expenses of the benefits and, uh, and, uh,
Everything else.
The benefit, everything else, yes, correct, so.
Yeah. Mr. Hogan?
Yeah, through the, uh, through the chair to, uh, council, the number that jumped out at me was six hundred and forty-four hardship flags to five hundred and ninety-seven regular flags.
That's all.
That seemed, that, that tells me that our hardship flag, the, the bar is pretty easy to achieve, to be considered a hardship when there's more hardship flags than, than regular flags. Um, and I have many stories from our grader operators who, and our equipment operators who tell us that, you know, they've gone into a yard to clean out the driveway, but the rest of the yard is cleaned out, you know, uh, somebody's running, somebody who met the requirement, particularly probably on age and is cleaning out with a, you know, with a seven thousand series John Deere. And, uh, and we're coming in with a little truck to do the driveway, everything's done except the driveway. There's lots of those stories. So I think one of the policy revisions that we'll be bringing back at a committee of the whole meeting is to talk about what does constitute a hardship. I do believe that we should have a hardship program for people who are in the country who definitely need some assistance with their driveways. But, uh, but I think right now our bar is pretty low. Uh, you're sixty-four, you don't, you're not hardship, you turn sixty-five, you are.
Yeah, well, this is, this is for information, so we can. Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Krevjak.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. So, uh, the actual cost to the MD would be one oh five minus a twenty-three thousand? Yeah, so eighty-one thousand plus. Okay.
Approximately.
Thank you, yeah.
All right, looking, uh, for a motion, Jolene? Yes, okay, thank you, Counselor Krevjak, for making a motion on behalf of council that council accepts the two thousand twenty-two, sorry, two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two winter snow plowing of driveways update as information. Any discussion? Seeing none, just going to call it for the vote. I don't know how to say it. Is it me?
This thing's been fishy all day. I, I got nothing on it.
Make a movie waiting on car, Counselor Swigert or, uh, Skarson.
That's what I'm doing right now.
How did you vote?
I haven't decided yet.
Okay. He's a lot faster than I could go log in and log on. There we go, Carrie, thank you. Nine, two, uh, nine, five, two, dust control list.
Thank you, uh, council. I will turn the next two items over to the manager of transportation for, uh, for the next two.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Reeve, members of council. So the first RFD is for twenty twenty-two dust control list. As per dust control policy four eight point zero one eight, administration will present to council a list of proposed dust control locations to be completed by the end of the current year. Attached are two compiled lists of dust control locations. The first list administra, the first list is the list administration recommends completing in the twenty twenty-two calendar year. And the second list includes a section of road that has been requested, but administration has concerns that it does not meet the criteria as intended. The lists include both new dust control requests received and known dusting areas based on concerns from previous years. Excuse me. Administration currently recommends using HF five hundred cold mix asphalt or MG thirty for dust control. HF five hundred cold mix asphalt has a proven track record and the advantage of a longer expected service life than MG thirty. However, it is not as durable as MG thirty when installed under heavy industry traffic conditions. So appendix A. Please see appendix A for the compiled twenty twenty-two recommended dust control list and appendix B for the compiled twenty twenty-two requested dust control list. And appendix C is the map for the, for the proposed work locations as per the requested dust control list. So it shows all of them that were requested. Administration estimates HF five hundred, HF five hundred dust control applications typically cost approximately a hundred and thirty dollars per lineal meter and MG thirty dust control applications cost approximately thirty dollars per lineal meter. Whenever possible, we will utilize suitable salvage materials from capital road construction projects to reduce the cost for the HF five hundred cold mix asphalt applications that would be recycled from other projects. Cost and source of funding, the estimated cost to complete the twenty twenty-two recommended dust control list is two hundred and ninety-four thousand, five hundred dollars and fits within Infrastructure Services approved twenty twenty-two operating budget. And the estimated cost to complete the twenty twenty-two requested dust control list is five hundred and forty-five thousand and also fits within the Infrastructure Services approved twenty twenty-two operating budget. Uh, administra, administration recommended action is that council approves the twenty twenty-two recommended dust control list as presented, which is appendix A.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Reeve Fadiev.
Yeah, hi, thanks for the list. So this, this list does not include, uh, our road use, our road use agreements that we might have with, uh, gravel companies or oil companies as well, or this is the whole list, this, yeah?
This is just the list of the dust control, yes, it doesn't single out the road use. There's all kinds of road use agreements in place right now with industry.
So would that be in this list then as well, or no, this is separate to the road use?
Some of them may overlap with some of the road use that we have, yes.
Okay, uh, I, I, I know there's North and Marie Lake, uh, has, there was some, some issues there last year with them hauling gravel and there were some safety concerns and I don't see that on here. Or we don't, I, I just wanted to come back, uh, want us to come back with a stronger road use agreement with people that are using these roads. If it wasn't for them using these roads, the dust wouldn't be created. And there were some safety issues, uh, that I had with that, so, uh, so I guess my, you know, my question is how are these lists compiled? And is it done through our, through the public request and like through our online system? Or this list, uh, drive through different means? I know there's a lot of questions there.
Yeah, that's fine. Through the reef, uh, to Deputy Reeve, uh, Fadiev. Um, it, it, this list does not include the roads, I just found this out shortly before the meeting, um, that, that we do dust control on that industry pays for. There are some roads out there that they cover the costs of doing it. So there's only one on here that is a shared cost.
So when you say industry, what does that mean to you?
Uh, the
The oil?
The oil haulers.
So I, I think, you know, gravel haulers should be as well in that because I mean, that is still part of the industry. And I know that's, that's who was beating up that road North and Marie Lake. And, uh, so, you know, maybe that's not captured because we don't have a road use agreement with the gravel company. And I know that on, uh, on the, uh, called the border road, uh, by, by Cherry Grove, there's a bunch of gravel pits there and there is use, road use agreements with that industry there, but not elsewhere. So I just want to see it the same throughout the MD. That makes sense.
Okay, through the reef, so the majority of these locations are requests from public residents. The, the vast majority of them.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor Krevjak?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Reeve, to, Mr. Dinenko, I have, uh, two questions. Number one, there was a request, uh, on Range Road four seventy, four eighty-three, south of six sixty, what's happening with that, uh, dust control? You know which one I'm talking about, eh?
Yes, so there are approximately, through the reef to Counselor Krevjak, there are approximately six locations that we removed due to, due to them not meeting our criteria as outlined in our policy. This particular case was assessed and dust control was completed last year, which does meet our, our criteria of the two hundred meters in front of a residence. Um, I am familiar with the particular one you're asking for, they were requesting the entire, uh, length of their owned land, which was one mile, sixteen hundred meters. So they, they have their, it, it's right in our policy that it's two hundred, maximum two hundred meters.
So they have more than two hundred meters, you're saying?
So they, they meet the criterias, they have two hundred or, or more, they're, they're, yeah.
Okay, thank you, I have one other question. Did we not approve, uh, council, Mr. Reeve, to council? Did we not approve fifty dust controls for the year? Seems to me I recall the number fifty we approved. Or that was not for the, this term. Anybody recall that?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Hogan and then, uh, Counselor Swigert.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Reeve, to council. So the, the challenge with dust control for operations staff is, uh, pretty simple is we've got, uh, a large number of applicants and a three hundred thousand dollar budget. I'm not familiar with the fifty applications, the, the number that we always, or since I've been here, was the budget number of three hundred thousand. And you can see on the recommended list, we just bumped up to the three hundred thousand with the recommended list. Not everybody, uh, so not every request may show up on here because we've also had to try to, um, uh, you know, if we did every request that, uh, is indicated on appendix B, we would have almost doubled the dust control budget. So we can do dust control any way council wants to do it, they're just going to require council to, um, uh, to open up, uh, um, the checkbook and say, well, we'll apply more money to it. Right now, we've been working on the recommended list to the three hundred thousand dollar, which is why some didn't make that list. We had to look, um, uh, Mr. Dinenko and Mr. Bespelko had to look at the requests and decide which ones best fit policy, which ones were closer to policy, which are the ones that we know that are, are, are required. Uh, we certainly take Counselor Fadiev's, uh, concerns and I think what we'll do in the future is come back to council with a complete map of all the dust controls taking place, including the, um, including those that are done through road use agreements. So we kind of have a bit more of a broader picture of what dust control looks like. But in terms of the requests and the, and the, and the budgeted money, uh, um, towards dust control of the three hundred thousand, we, we create the list, uh, based on that three hundred thousand, make our recommendations. And if the council can do anything they would like with this list, they can add, subtract, multiply, divide, just, uh, um, and at the end, if it's more money, then just make a, uh, somebody make a motion for a, a budget amendment. I would also clarify for council, because oftentimes it goes unstated, this is the cost of product only. This is not the cost of the application, this is product only, there's no manpower, there's no vehicles, there's no gravel, there's no water. This is purely the cost of the product. So your actual dust control budget at three hundred thousand dollars, you're probably closer to an actual budgetary impact of about nine hundred thousand. This is about one-third of the actual cost of a dust control application.
Yeah, that's fair. Yeah, Counselor Swigert?
I'll just think back to, I guess, previous council and not, not sure if we, if we're, uh, doing this right or wrong then, but, um, we had council or Reeve Klinsky, remember this, we each had, uh, each council had seven dust controls for the area. So that's probably where the numbers, kind of fifty came from, because we, we were, I think we were probably using most of them back then and doing fifty a year approximately, so I, so now we have a list of ten and I just wondered, that's, um, you got ten recommended. Um, and that's great if that's all there are, I just wondered though, do we still have like thirty or forty or fifty people asking for it and we've cut it down to ten? Is, and I maybe, maybe we've done enough dust controls that we don't need, need any more than ten. I just, I'm still, I'm kind of curious that we've gone from fifty to ten. So
Natural factors, twenty-two.
Right. Dust controls and oil, oil dust controls.
Yeah, oil and, and MG thirties.
So can you explain that to me though? No, I'm just saying dust, oiled, oiled dust controls, there's only ten oiled dust controls.
But there's twelve, uh, there's twelve MG thirties.
No, I'm just talking about oiled.
Oh.
Yeah, because it was, because it was, that was in the old days, it was oiled dust controls before we had MG thirty, so, and we were doing fifty of them.
Council can make any number you'd like.
No, I'm just curious, are, are we, uh, are we up, up to speed now?
No, I'm just curious, are we, are we up to speed now? Like, that's all we've asked?
That's, so again, what, again, through the chair to council, all we've done is we had a $300,000 budget, and we created 22 dust controls based on a $300,000 budget. We could have had, we could have had 15, I don't know what the number would have been, but we could have had more cold mix and less MG30. We could have had way more MG30 and less cold mix. We're just trying to pick those ones that Mr. Dinenko and his staff felt were the priorities inside a $300,000 budget. We have as many as you'd like, but we were working under a $300,000 budget.
Thank you.
Yep, Counselor.
I got a few questions and requests. Okay, on Appendix A, on number 12, you got Township Road 640 MG30. And on that, that their application, like that's going to Tucker Lake, and all the road going that way is cold mix. And if we put MG30 on, what my fears are, if we put MG30 in front of her house, that's the route most campers take in the summer, and that's when she gets all her dust. I believe we're going to see a lot of campers taking the route off Highway 55 north by the garbage dump going that way instead to bypass that MG30 with their expensive campers and stuff. Because a lot of people just don't try to bypass it. I don't see why we don't stay consistent with cold mix along that route then, the whole route. Because there's no other MG30, I believe, on that route. So it's just a suggestion.
Through the reef, to Counselors Slipchak, we can have a look at it. It is what was requested, though, on our request was MG30 on that particular location.
Yeah, I'd appreciate if you'd look at it again. Another one is on Range Road 463, north of Township Road 620. We got quite a few residents there marked in there as requested for application. Each household has 200 meters assigned to it of all cold mix they're asking for. And I don't understand, because on that road on the north side, it's a cul-de-sac kind of, there's four houses together. So I believe like maybe 300 meters would cover four of them houses. Then there's one further up, that's only one house. That would be 200. And then there's one resident where there's, it's just a yard, there's not even a home there. So, like, and also, wasn't that road just recently built? And should there be a time before we're applying cold mix to make sure we got good compaction? And I believe I heard that there had to be a culvert put in that road too. So wouldn't we be going backwards if we still have to do all this stuff then putting cold mix on, and putting cold mix on prior?
Through the reef to Counselor Slipchak, that's correct. So that is the majority of the difference between the recommended and the requested is this particular stretch with the eight requests for 200 meters of HF500 cold mix. So that's, there is one other change to another location, but this is. And that is why we removed it, partly, what you said, there is a centerline culvert scheduled to go in this year. And there's only, one of the residents that applied already has dust control, and the other, there's four more that are at the end of the road, and that's why we kind of deferred it till the following year. I don't know how we'd get 800 meters in a cul-de-sac. And there's a, and a couple more of the requests, actually, there isn't even a house there. So that is the major difference between the Appendix A and Appendix B, as far as the cost.
I have another one.
Mr. Reeve?
Yes.
Just, it's a question for council, because our policy kind of stipulates kind of what the requirements are to get dust control, but it doesn't address the service standard. And the question I have for council is what do you want dust control to do? Is dust control to protect those people on busy roads where potentially lots of dust? Or are we dust controlling into cul-de-sacs now? There's a limited budget unless council wants to spend more money. We can certainly look at some of these changes that some counselors would like to see, but remember that if we were to take one, and then are we still going to be inside that $300,000 budget? So what is it that you really want to see your dust control do? Or is it just something that we just give to each ward, that each ward just does? I don't sense, I don't sense a cohesive direction in terms of what you want dust control to do. What are we, what are we protecting? What are we doing? What is it that we want the dust control program to achieve? You know, in particular, there's, you know, one applicant wanted a mile of road dust control because they have cows on the road. Is that, that's fine if that's what council would like, but I'm suggesting our policy does not, we don't have a general direction in terms of our policies to what we want our dust control to achieve. Is it for the protection of livestock? Is it for the, is it for the protection of our resident population? Is it to protect those people that happen to be on busier routes that might not qualify for road use agreement but are a busy gravel road? So I think that's a, that's a long-term conversation, because we could build a much better criteria if we knew what council wanted out of dust control. We went from just everybody picking seven to trying to have some science behind what the dust control should do.
So when did we switch?
Hasn't been done since I've been here.
Four years ago.
We switched at the beginning, in the fall of 2017 or 2018, we went from seven each to 50 altogether. So if one counselor had 10, and one only had three or four, as long as you have 50, we did 50 altogether, all cold mix.
Okay. You've got, you kept that up?
Well, last four years, last four years, I think we did that. That's before Mr. Spolko's time as well, so.
Okay. Yes, Counselor Swiger, then Counselor Slipchak.
I guess just input for CAO Hogan. I think we were trying to do dust control with MG30 and with cold mix to, for residents who lived along a gravel road so that they didn't have to choke to death when, you know, the tankers and the cars and everybody went by. But it was for their residents, or it wasn't, you know, for their cattle and, or for their farming or anything else. So protection of residents, I'm thinking, is that why we were, that's why we were doing it.
So through the reef to Counselor Swiger, I certainly would accept that as a good rationale. And why are we doing cul-de-sac with four residents? There's no traffic, it's no true traffic. Why would we even consider? And that's my question. And if council wants to do those type of applications, absolutely, that's entirely council's call. We're just trying to, when people call and when we take the information, we build these lists, there needs to be some better criteria than just you applied and you got your application in by March 31st.
But on a major haul, sorry, Donnie, but on a major haul route, do we, do we still get them to put down MG30 on like a couple miles? Or do, does the oil companies still, or?
Yes.
Gravel haulers, do they still put? Because you're talking about animals, just crops, like I combine crops. And the first three, if you're on one of those busy roads, the first three, four, you should see the back of that combine, she's just like a, it's just like a, it's unbelievable, the dust that's coming out from the dust that's on that crop. And yeah, I think we have to look into this a little bit more. Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Slipchak.
The MG30 applications, when, what's the most amount of time you've ever had to reapply them over a course of a year on every traffic route?
Well, he's new to this here.
Yeah, through the reef to Counselor Slipchak.
If I may, counsel, in my past experience doing MG30, depending on the heavy traffic that's on the roads, there are times where I've applied MG30 and it's lasted one summer. There are times where we've applied MG30 and it's lasted two summers. Maintenance of it is also a big factor in how long it lasts, if it's not maintained properly, bladed when it's wet. If it's bladed when it's dry, you'll lose it. If it's bladed when it's wet, that's when it reactivates. So there's no real, I can't answer your question of how long it's going to last, but with good maintenance of the MG30 and medium amount of heavy traffic, it should at least last the summer, perhaps two, depending on what it is.
Would it be possible to get a list of also areas or roads where MG30 or dust control is applied for the industry, as per, for the industry? Because I know there's some roads in my area that they're putting there every year because of the heavy oil traffic, but I don't see none of them on the list. So it kind of causes confusion.
Through the reef to Counselor Slipchak, I understand that completely. This list was generated based on the policy that we have, that people apply for dust control. That's what this list is for your approval on. That's why this, that's why this list has, doesn't have as many areas as you're probably anticipating that we would have. Those are outside of that. Many of them are with the road use agreements that we do have, like Counselor Faddeev, or Deputy Reeve Faddeev was alluding to. In a road use agreement, they do have a condition in there that they must provide dust control. Now, whether that's MG30, whether that's water trucks, it doesn't stipulate what type of dust abatement they have to do, but they have to have it as part of the dust, or sorry, as part of the road use agreement that they, that they sign. Dust abatement is a clause in the road use agreement already. So that's why it's not on these lists, because this is generated by the requests that we've had.
Okay, thank you for that. Another thing I got is, well, I'd like to see us bring the policy back to council so we can all review it, come to an agreement, get a standard situation for dust control. Because at 110 bucks a barrel of oil, we can't be putting cold mix everywhere when there's no really dust issues.
And through the reef to Counselor Slipchak's comment there, absolutely. Administration is trying to be fiscally responsible with providing dust controls with a cost of, you know, around $2,500 for an MG30 200-meter dust control versus a $25,000 dust control for oil for the same 200 meters. We're trying to be fiscally responsible in evaluating what location needs what application. And yeah, it'd be great to do oil on all of them, but that increases our maintenance costs of it as well. So it's, oil is great, but it's not always the final answer on dust controls especially.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Reeve. In answer to your question, you asked, have there been any roads done with MG30, whatever? I had last year one road done, Township 632A, going west of 881, because there's a bus route there, and it goes to a gravel pit. It was 3-point something kilometers, if I remember. So that road was done. So we did do one in my ward last year.
We also, we also used to probably have, was applicators oil, and we got oil from the oil companies at one time, and we used to lay it down. We just used to go get it. We don't have that no more. That's all gone.
Through the reef, correct. We got rid of our distributors last year. They were not certified to haul oil down the road. You could haul them empty to a location, then you would have to fill it up, distribute the oil till you're empty, then move it to the next location. So that was the reason the distributors were.
Why is that?
Just the certification of the tanks, the lining of the tanks, they did not meet certification for hauling oil down the roads. That's, that's the big reason why we got rid of it.
Then did we look into new ones or no?
Pardon me?
Did we look into new ones or no?
No.
Or just scrap the whole project?
No, we didn't. We, whenever we ordered oil, we just had them send it in the, in the tankers that they deliver it with, and they distributed it for us on the road. And because we start mixing, we started mixing in the yard, all the cold mix, we don't do that a lot at all anymore, mixing on the road. Because we pre-mix in the yard and take mixed cold mix out already.
We used to do miles with that system.
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, one more final comment. See, if we didn't have a policy, we wouldn't have this discussion. There are some areas that I don't think a policy is constructive, like here. If we just have a set amount, 50, 25 cold mix and whatever, and 25 MG30, and have a budget for that, and away you go, instead of having a policy, and then this doesn't meet policy, you can't do this, can't do that. So that's my comment.
Okay, I think someone's going to comment to that comment? No? Al?
Well, sure, I'll bite. The reason for policy is to maximize your financial input while minimizing those other intangibles that may or may not be important. We try to look at what, how much money we have to spend, and then where should that money be spent? And just picking X number of places to do based on some non-scientific data doesn't seem to me to be the best use of our financial resources. There might be a year that maybe there's 22 applications required in Ward 4, for example. And maybe that's where all the money gets spent. And there might be another year where all the applications require to be spent in Ward 3. But they're done based on a criteria as to how we arrived at those decisions, not just because everybody, so everybody at the table gets seven applications. What if, what if somebody's just, well, I really only need it two, but I got five more? So we'll just throw money at five applications because I get seven. It seems to me to be that the best way to go about making those decisions about how we spend a half a million dollars of ratepayer money is by determining what the best use of that is, where the best locations for the application are, based on traffic, based on residences, based on, based on a number of criteria. That's why I think the policy is a much more prudent way to go than just, than just picking a number.
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, if we did need seven, we didn't use seven. And there was, there were some counselors who needed nine or 10, so we would share and give them whatever they needed, if somebody had some left over, that's all.
I will reiterate through the reef that this is council's choice. The policy is clear that this is council's decision. You guys pick wherever you would like dust control to go.
You bet.
I was just going to make the motion, Mr. Reeve.
Okay, go ahead.
The council approves the 2022 recommended dust control list as presented.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Oh, sorry. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Swiger, for making the motion on behalf of council. The council approves the 2022 recommended dust control list as presented. Any further discussion on this? Yes, Counselor Slipchak.
Yeah, okay, so if we take this as presented, are we still going to look at that Township Road 640, the recommended, like changing that from MG30 possibly?
Through the reef, I'll reach out to the resident and go have a look at it as well, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Through the chair to council, if council approves this motion.
It's done.
This would be done. I don't know how, I don't know how we would, how we would change this once council, if this, if this council, if this motion is carried. I don't know how then we would go and change it without coming back to council.
Mr. Reeve, I mean, we're going to approve this, and if something comes back, it comes back to council. And if we have, we can have it, otherwise, we're not moving forward at all. I'd rather see us do, at least get them started, and you got an issue, then bring it back for sure, and we can, I think, look at it again. Doesn't change the rest of it.
Yeah, we need to get this approved, and then you can bring it back for sure.
Through the reef, doesn't option, doesn't option two allow for that, what we just discussed? Or am I mistaking? If you look at option two?
Just one more final comment.
With that one revision, that work?
Yeah, we need to bring that policy back for revision, Mr. Reeve and Mr. Seale, whenever.
Can, Mr. Reeve?
Yes.
Can Counselor Slipchak, does he have that revision immediately? I'll change that motion to number two if he's, if he knows what he wants.
Yeah, but somebody else, if he does that right now, everyone else could have a revision here, and we could have, we could be here till tomorrow.
Well, maybe.
Yeah. Well, is that not true?
I don't have, well, I don't have any, I don't have any. Maybe everyone else does.
Yeah. I don't, like, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know that I will not be here till tomorrow.
Okay. Thanks, Starcey. You're at the Oilers game?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Reeve?
Yes.
If we make that revision at this point in time, understand that council would then have two, one other decision to make.
You got to add more money.
Are they giving us, giving more money, or reducing somebody else's dust control? Because it's all dominoes. Again, we're working on a $300,000 budget for product. If council wants to increase that budget, that's fine, but if we, if we make the change to add that to cold mix, that is going to significantly increase and put us well over the $300,000 mark.
Okay. Well.
Can I have one more question?
Yeah, go ahead.
How did we arrive at the $300,000 budget for this? How did we arrive at the three-hundred thousand dollar budget for this?
Uh, council arrived.
Were you, you did?
That's you and me. Yes, Counselor Slipchak.
I'd say let's move forward and go with the MG thirty for, try it for a year and see how it works then, let's, let's get this stuff done.
Yeah, it's just we don't know, we don't know what, you know, it's a valid thing or whatever, but we, none of us at council actually know where this road is that you're talking about. Yeah, well, we... Okay, any other discussion? So we're going with the first, okay? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna call this to the vote. Okay, carried. Nine-five-three.
Nine-five-three is the RFD for the twenty-twenty-two rip and relay locations. This RFD is to provide an update to council of the planned rip and relay locations for the twenty-twenty-two construction season. Administration has compiled a list of roads that require attention. They've been prioritized based on structural integrity, surface integrity, and potential long-term preventative maintenance objectives. See appendix A for the compiled twenty-twenty-two rip and relay location list. See appendix B for the map of the rip and relay locations. There are twelve miles of road designated as priority one. There are seventeen and a half miles of road designated as priority two, and there are four and a half miles of road designated as priority three. Administration intends to utilize thirty thousand tons of the sixty thousand tons of cold mix that will be produced in the yard this year. Administration plans to complete all the priority one roads, then proceed with the completion of the priority two roads based on traffic counts.
Thank you, Deputy Reeve Fadiev.
Sorry. Uh, this work fits within our infrastructure services approved operating budget and administration, administration recommends that council accepts, accepts the twenty-twenty-two rip and relay locations update as information.
Sorry, Mr. Denny Anko, I thought, I thought I saw a hand go up and...
I paused too long.
I was, I was reading and, uh, did you, did your hand go up?
Oh, I did.
Okay, good.
Yeah, he...
I thought I was seeing things.
I said he, he paused for too long. I have a question regards to Township Road six thirty, uh, that'll be east of, uh, Range Road four eleven. Is there any residents that live there? Cause I, I don't recall any and if I did, I missed knocking on their door.
That's the third one down from the top?
Yeah, I just got a little map there. It's, uh, it's on the, it's on the, it's on the map, it's, uh, appendix B.
Yep.
But it's just east of the, the ski hill?
No, I don't believe there's, through the reef, to Counselor Fadiev, I don't believe there's any residents on there. That's the last mile from the curve to the Saskatchewan border.
I was just informed by GM Yoncet there are two residents on that road, uh, currently.
And there are, where are they on that? Sorry. Right on, right on the curve? And they're not in, they're not in Saskatchewan? Okay. Okay, thanks for that information. I thought they were in Saskatchewan.
Well, says there's quite a bit of traffic there.
Oh, there's a lot of traffic there. That was my...
Someone make a motion that send Counselor Skarson to...
Ask for help.
Yeah, from the RM.
Ask for, ask for all of the first.
Sure.
Settle for help.
Sure. Okay.
Is that better, Mike? I'll make the motion to approve this list, how's that sound?
Okay. Okay, thank you, Counselor Skarson, for making a motion on behalf of council. The council accepts the two thousand twenty-two rip and relay location update as information. Any discussion on this motion? Yes, Counselor Slipchak?
Yes, okay, my question is, uh, I know we were told, uh, a while back that we had bad product laid back in the past down. How many of these are rip and relay due to bad product that was laid down?
Sorry, I didn't hear you.
Okay, we were told a while back that, uh, they had a lot of issues, some issues with, uh, cold mix because it was a bad mix, bad batch. How many of these rip and relays are because of that bad batch being laid down, have to be replaced?
Through the reef to Counselor Slipchak, I don't know if any of them are from last year's cold mix. We did some patching on, on one of the roads that I know of that with that...
Six forty?
Last year's cold mix, but for the most part, these are all older roads, not last year's.
Okay, so that, that, like, these are more than a year old, uh, all are more than a year old, these pa, uh, roads? Okay, cause I, I just know on Township Road six thirty to Range Road four seventy-one, I know I got a few calls on that one and it isn't the best, but it's not a gravel road. Like, it's, there's pebbles in that, but it's still not all potholes and that. I just, like, at least you're waiting a year, another year, maybe two years on that instead of going forward with a bunch of wasted money.
Yeah, I could really speak to that, uh, that they're, uh, just like, just didn't stick as much. They just had to put a lot more on and that's why they ran out, uh, because they had to put more on or for it to be compacted properly and then it really ate up on that pile. I had a, I had one done at, uh, an award, they used about thirty percent more of the product in order to make it stick, but it was like sand.
Yeah, it's terrible.
Uh, Mr. Reeve, was that two years ago, not last year?
Two years ago.
Yeah, that was two years ago, yeah.
I seen one from last year when I was out there, there's one in your area, I think, by, uh, Athol Lake.
Township Road, Township Road six forty.
What?
Township Road six forty.
It was just laid down and the people are out there patching it, it was horrid.
East of eight ninety-two.
It was just, uh, it was just popping up like ice freezing on a, it's terrible stuff.
Mr. Reeve, it's listed on this map.
Is it?
But for next year? For next year, six forty east of six...
So we just did the road last year and we're doing it again?
Next year.
That's, that sucks that one happens.
Yeah.
Counselor Crick?
So this list here, um, in approving it, if, if they, if staff sees that there's roads that are worse than what's on the schedule for rip and relay or, uh, we've got three priorities, we've got the red for priority number one and yellow priority two. If they get all the red ones done, priority one, and then there's something, and the road in particular that I'm thinking of is, uh, fiftieth, I did mention it to General Manager Bespelko, uh, fiftieth Avenue or Township Road six fifteen A, I'm not sure if you, if you looked at it yet or not, but just if it's, and if it's worse off than some of the other roads, are we gonna switch the priorities partway through the summer kind of thing to fix that road or, or others like that? It doesn't, I'm not necessarily saying we have to do that particular road, but just if we find something that's worse off, how does that work?
Through the reef to Counselor Crick, um, this is just provided for information, so I think we do have some latitude on which roads we do after the priority ones are complete.
Okay. Then I'll make a motion, we go ahead and approve this list. It's already been done.
I think there's a motion on already.
Sorry.
That's okay. We're gonna, we're, we're doubling up on this one.
I'll pass the motion.
You're the second, yeah, you, you're doing a Donnie now. Okay, thank you, Counselor Skarson, I believe it was, on making a motion on behalf of, or did we do that already? We did it already. We're on discussion part. No, we didn't vote though. Okay, any other discussion before we vote? Okay, no, gonna call to the vote then. Sorry, guys, I'm a little mixed up there.
Thank you.
Yeah, that pause was, as soon as he paused, your hand went up and I'm like... Carried. Uh, nine-point-six, nine-point-six-one.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council, uh, this is council invitation, council did receive an invitation to the following event, the Bonneville Senior Citizen Society Senior Social Evening on Friday, June the tenth, twenty-twenty-two. The Bonneville Senior Citizen Society is hosting a senior social evening on, on that Friday, starting at seven PM. There'll be snacks and drinks as well as music. Fifty-fifty silent auction and door prizes are available. The entry fee is by donation. You can see the attached letter and the administration recommended action as the council approves attendance to the Bonneville Seniors Society Senior Social Evening on Friday, June tenth of twenty-twenty-two.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, I'll make that motion to approve this, thank you.
Is there a motion for, Louie? There we go. Thank you, Counselor Crayback, making a motion on behalf of council. The council approves attending to, attendance to the Bonneville Seniors, Bonneville Seniors Citizen Society Senior Social Event, Friday, June tenth, two thousand twenty-two. Thank you. Yeah. Yeah, okay, thanks. Any discussion on this? Okay, I'll call the vote then. Carried, Darcy's getting faster. Correspondence information, Mr. Hogan?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Members of council, uh, you do have a list of sixteen pieces of, fifteen pieces of correspondence that did come in. Uh, I won't go through all of them, but I will point out, um, in particular, number two, the letter from the Youth Rights Society Canada, an invitation for us to participate. Uh, there is, uh, um, uh... The letter from the Bonneville Friendship Center, invitation to the gala and request for support, and an email from the Ronald McDonald House Charities, invitation to hustle for the house. Uh, I leave it to council to give us any direction they would like on those, uh, and that's what we have for correspondence.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or will we need a motion? Thank, uh, yes, Counselor Skarson?
Yeah, there's one other one there that, um, should probably address or maybe talk about is the lemonade day.
Oh, right.
Cause there are, it is, um, they're asking for sponsorship and it is coming up. So to go on, we should talk more.
And through the reef to council, uh, Ms. Keenbow just informed me that the, uh, that the invitation to the lemonade day, was it advised to apply for, through the community grants? They do qualify for community grants.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I'm just curious, so how does, so how does that, how does that one apply? How does that apply, how does a community action grant apply to them? Like, how does, how do they fit into that criteria?
Through the reef, uh, Community Futures Lakeland is a registered society with the province and they are located within our boundaries, so, um, and the information that was, uh, submitted to, to community services through Lisa Ford, it does appear that the event itself and the request that they were, that they're asking for is within the parameters and of the, uh, community action grant program.
Okay, thank you.
So, I get, sorry again.
You're back.
Yeah, I'm back.
That's okay. She, I said that to her, not to you.
Oh.
She's back.
So how do you, how, like, I guess, will we know beforehand if it's been accepted or what the level of sponsorship was? You know what I mean? So just something that we should be aware of, right?
Agreed. Um, through the reef, the, any sponsorships that are provided are, um, whether it's through the donation and sponsorship policy or the community action grant policy, um, they are provided on a regular basis through ledge services, uh, to say what's been approved and what hasn't been approved. There are some, however, that are more timely when it's an event, uh, that, that is forthcoming. I'm trying to think of one off the top of my head earlier this year that was approved and, um, we do try to send a notification out through myself to council, um, advising of these events should council would like to attend.
And, yeah, I don't mean to harp on this one again, but it's, uh, cause they're also asking for volunteer judges, right? So is that part of it or...
Um, that is a good question. We have not received a community action grant application yet. However, if it's within this correspondence, then, uh, perhaps that is something the council should discuss currently.
Well, it's right here, provide a minimum of three volunteers, a judge, lemonade. So, I don't know, maybe something that they want to see, I guess.
I'll just say my kids are planning to participate in that event, so I won't judge that.
Okay, any other questions? Just looking for a motion then?
I know, uh, they were speaking to holding it at multiple locations, one in Cold Lake, I believe, and one in Bonneville, um, so what exactly? We can definitely dig in a little deeper. I reach out to them and confirm what exactly, how many people they're looking for and where are they looking them to be. Okay?
Thank you. Any other discussion or any other questions? Just looking for a motion to move this.
Can I make the voting quick?
Okay. Uh, thank you, Counselor Crayback, for making a motion on behalf of council. The council accepts the following correspondence and information, one through sixteen. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, I'm, call the vote. Uh, reports, I guess? Whoever wants to start, go ahead.
I got my mic on first though, so...
I believe, uh, Darcy had his mic on first, yeah.
But I've got nothing to report, so...
All right. Just feel free to jump in wherever. Mr. Skarson, are you ready? Sorry, Mr. Swager? That's twice.
Yeah, I'm ready.
Okay.
Beaver River Regional Waste Management Committee meeting, uh, sixteenth of May. Uh, the haul contract got approved, uh, went to Core Projects. I think it was, it used to be Accurate, but it's the same company just called Core, no? I'll just mention, actually, the, we were gonna extend their contract for, I think, three years, um, but I had just kind of made the motion that we maybe tender it to see if we can do better. Actually, we did do better when we tendered it. But anyway, so we have another three-year haul contract. One of the other things we did is we, we increased the haul rates by a dollar a ton or a tone to build up a surplus for trailer replacement because they, Beaver River, Beaver River Regional Waste Commission didn't have any money in the bank really to replace the trailers, is that what they've got? So a little bit of money every year after maybe a hundred years, Counselor Fadiev, we'll have enough money to buy another trailer. Anyway, at least we're doing the right thing there. Waste Reduction Committee on the same day, uh, we did talk about K and K recycling, so they've, they've got the, uh, contract to pick up our, our steel. The, uh, there was discussion about, and there's always been discussion about, uh, uh, landfill costs for MD residents versus town Bonneville and Cold Lake residents. Uh, Counselor Fadiev may want to talk a bit about that, but, uh, any, any Cold Lake residents or town of Bonneville residents, as they always do, they'll come to the MD web, or landfills and, and throw away their trust because we don't charge. So it's a bit controversial, uh, for residents saying, well, how come, how come, how come, you know, they can dump for free, we have to go to their landfills and pay? But, so there was a, a, an ask at that meeting to track residents out of the MD that come to our landfills, because our landfill operators know basically everybody around and so if we just kind of have a record of how many outsiders coming into our landfills to dump, then maybe we can make some decision on, do we actually, do we actually start charging people to go to landfill? So there's more to that story, but it's an interesting discussion. Toxic roundup. Toxic Roundup, we've been doing that for years with the with the town. Where M D's decided not to have a toxic roundup anymore because we really don't need it. We take everything at our landfills. So we didn't really need to participate with the town on on that one. LICA, you know, I attended the Integrated Watershed Management Plan Committee meeting on the seventeenth of May. There has been a request from LICA that they get as many M D councillors and and even some staff if they if Mr. Hogan allow that to go to a session on the fourteenth of June. And I sent that message out to all councillor, all councillors at the C two. So it's a an open house session to review their integrated water management plan. It's a hundred and twenty page document. There's lots of good input there for for the M D and and other groups, but they're looking for that input. So I'm gonna I'm gonna send out a draft to everyone. Hopefully, we can get a few other councillors other than me attend that that workshop on the fourteenth of June. And 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 this councillor, CA Hogan, maybe you can query your staff and see if you want to get one or two environmental folks or somebody to that session. It would sure help LICA. And that's it. Thank you.
I'll go next, Mr. Reeve.
Yeah.
I went I went to Northeast Zone F C S S meeting. I had a guest speaker, Donna Webster, indigenous lady, talked about how do we stand in solidarity. A very good speaker and, you know, first indigenous persons that spoke, they never never blamed anyone, I guess. I went to the Lakeland Lodge and Housing meeting. The province gave us a hundred dollars per unit for the high utility costs. So we received thirty eight thousand six hundred dollars. There's fifteen vacancies in Cold Lake Lodge, twenty one in Bonnie Lodge. And we had a number of COVID cases in the Bonnie Lodge and was up to like sixteen at one time. And now there's just a handful in quarantine, and maybe right now there aren't any.
Four. Pardon me? I know a lady that works there. She said there's four yesterday.
Yeah, four. There were there were four, but I think they're almost at the end of their quarantine period, which is good news. And nobody was, I guess, really terribly sick. Went to the grand opening of Kenusu with most of council. It was a great event, a lot of dignitaries from other councils, and Reeve Kalinsky made a great speech there. Went to Vishavanka Day, which is the Ukrainian embroidery clothing day. It's on a Thursday of every May, and there was about two hundred people in attendance, which was good to see, welcoming the seventeen Ukrainians displaced by the war in Ukraine who were in attendance. And also had a B R F A E M S negotiations meeting, a virtual, and we're having another one on Friday. But we want to have a face-to-face meeting so we can discuss actual negotiating of a new contract. So see what happens. Thank you.
Mr. Reeve, can I just add to the this Kenusu Adventure Park opening? Like, I was just blown away actually by the food service out there, so and and I had to ask, I said, is this all catered or whatever? But, you know, if that's any indication, we're gonna have a great restaurant out there and great food service. So just everybody, you know, I'm I'm hoping people attend that just for even for lunch or whatever, because it was great, I thought.
Yeah, well, well spoken.
Okay, it's been pretty quiet week. I attended Lakeland Lodge Housing as well. Not not more to add to what Mike said, except that we'll be doing a tour of all the lodges here in the near very near future. So looking forward to that. And also I have attended Munichor meeting on Zoom, and they're looking at a program of getting working with somebody to rent bikes for the Iron Horse Trail. I think will be really beneficial to promote that trail. And I think, oh, and Kenusu, yes, I attended that grand opening. That was great. And looking forward, I think we can see good things come forward at that Kenosi Ski Resort and Adventure Park. And continue moving forward. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Same as as the other councillors here, Waste Reduction. Councillor Swagger covered that. F C S S districts, I was not able to to go. But I I heard that our M D was very well represented by councillor Crick and councillor Criviek, and they're very they're always impressed how the M D puts in their effort with F C S S. Yeah, and that's about really, really it. Nothing else kind of went on. I didn't ring the bell on LICA councillor Crick over at the over at the Adventure Park, and I did not wear my dress shoes to try to attempt to to climb like Reeve Kalinsky.
Attempt is the right word. Attempt was the right word.
All right. Yeah, I went to the F C S A Northeast Regional Conference in La Cabeche with councillor Criviek, and that was interesting. The there was an indigenous lady that spoke, and I I don't agree with everything she said, but she had some good points. Went to the Harts for Health Care Gala and also the Kidniss Ridge Grand Opening and welcoming Ukrainians here. And then Friday last week, on the twentieth, there was a high tea and flag raising in honor of the Queen, seventy years of service. So I attended that in Bonneville, and that's about it.
Okay, you guys pretty well covered everything. I was at it as well. Good job, everybody. And I just thank Mike. He did an awesome job of that embroidery thing. He was he spoke on behalf of the M D, and I thought he did an excellent job. And then the grand opening there, I think it was really a great. Have the, you know, County of St. Paul and the Sea of Cold Lake and Town of Bonneville, they all came out. And they're very excited for the thing as well, so it's really good to attend. And I don't think I'll ever do that in my dress shoes again. But thank you. Great. Good job, everybody. Uh, where are we at? Flip the page. Is there any closed session? Yeah, okay. Deputy Reeve?
I'll make the motion and go on closed session.
Thank you. All those in favor? Carried, thank you. Too fast? Oh, this is coming up. Okay, we gotta vote on screen, folks. We have to vote on screen. Jolene, Jolene, Jolene. Al, can I talk about something right off the bat before we get into that?
Yes.
Yeah. Unless somebody's gotta go. We can have a five-minute break, sure. Why she's not allowed to leave if we have a five-minute break? Oh. Carried.
Yes, just to approve the I C F list as presented.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you councillor Slipcek makes the motion to approve the I C F.